And we'll open the county commissioner meeting with... Clutch report.
You should have the minutes for the last meeting, October 6 meeting for approval in Semigard.
I made the motion, we've set the clutch report as...
Second, second that motion.
And sign the warrants.
And sign the warrants.
And sign the warrants. Only favor that motion? Oh, we need to do the...
Yes, Terry.
Yeah, yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Clyde.
Yes.
Yanis, 3-0.
All right. Next item is the treasures report.
We have several warrants, we had a chip warrant, two UT warrants, a people warrant, and three county warrants.
We already made a motion in past time.
Yeah.
For the sign of those warrants.
And also, we have the September bank runs, so you should see what you would like.
And we're still making money.
We're still making money.
Good, that's what we want.
I move the effort before, if accepted.
Second motion. Only favor that motion.
Terry.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Clyde.
Yes.
Yanis, 3-0.
Item number three, insurance for Madred gravel pit building.
Yeah, we had a question from our carrier, Kies, on what we'd like to do with the CME salt building in Madred. Did you have a copy of the email right there in front of you? Do we, what do we want for coverage on that building?
Oh. How much is just the liability on the building, you know?
I don't know the particulars.
We wouldn't know that, right? But the total amount of the insurance, she said it was $2,000, $2 less, down $2,000, $2. It looks to me like it was up. It was $200,924, now it's $2,000. I'm sorry.
It's, well, there's two different, she's talking, there's two different coverages there. You're talking about the side renewal is down too, but the general blanket and building and contents for the general county was an increase.
Ms. Prentary?
That's the total, right, the blanket you're talking about?
Yes, correct, yeah.
For everything. So it's just going up? That building is put together by pieces.
Can I suggest that we reach out to them and find out what it costs to put liability on it and not cover the building? The building can't be worth anything, it's a shack. It was built, homemade thing, and stuff, everything. I would think, we went out a couple times, every year we do the road thing, you see it, it's just spare.
Yeah.
It keeps the rain out, but it's not very, I mean, I need that, maybe they can value it at what it's worth.
We put a new roof on it, didn't we, a couple years ago?
But it's really not much, a bunch of wooden boards put on the side of the pole behind, it looks like. So could we find out, well, what do you think?
Yeah.
Mike?
What did you say, they was adding to cover the building?
Well, I don't know, we have to find out.
We'll get to find out, we'll have Vicki call and find out.
We can at least check into it, I mean, I don't think it's much value in the building, would you say? I mean, it's there, we don't want to lose it, but...
I don't see much value in that building, I mean, if it had, you know, an ample amount of money to cover that, then I probably wouldn't cover it. You need a general liability because you've got people going in and out of it, if somebody's gonna call, you're gonna be held liable, so.
So I would recommend that we just renew the policy, agree to it, and ask them to review that, if they, if they find that we can save money or we don't need, maybe they're valuable, maybe it's only valuable to nothing, but I doubt that, they're probably...
They'll put some value on it.
So whether, let them hold the thing up, I mean, let's keep insurance on it, but let's...
But we just make a motion, just liability on it.
Okay, well, unless, well, depends, if they're valuable at $40,000, maybe we'd want it.
Well, I don't think this, there's no value like that on that building.
Either way, whatever you guys...
Just liability.
I'd just make the motion, I'd make that motion myself.
For what?
Just liability.
Just liability.
Because the building really isn't worth that much, you put it together by pieces.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, or you want to make, you want to...
I'll do it.
Already, you, I'll second the motion.
Just liability.
Okay, good.
Any discussion on that motion?
Just liability.
Just liability.
Perfect, thank you.
Role call?
Terry.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Clyde.
Yes.
Thank you.
Vicki, will you let the other one do?
I'll let her move then.
Okay. Is that it for new business?
We have a lot miscellaneous.
Well, we'll just go to old business first.
Old business first.
So you get it in that one.
Yeah, let's do old.
So we'll do this discussion of Calvin Gray Road Bridges and Construction and bid process. You want to come out, Mike?
Sure.
You guys get a copy of that email from Mike Andrews from Darego Timbers?
No, no.
I don't see it.
Let me see.
Wow, what's that about? Well, it's, it's a, what it does is it breaks down everything that they, that they say they're gonna need to do this, and what it would cost, exactly what the cost would be, so.
Do you want to know?
If you'd like to have a copy of all that stuff. Are they sole, the only people that do this in the state?
Well, that's one of the things they said to me, is like, you know, they don't know many people that are doing this particular work, but they said, "You could just set out to buy the materials off and then put the installation off a bid." He said, "We generally don't have any trouble beating other people's bid on installation because it's, you've never installed them, it's a lengthy process."
But I would think that it would be the better way to do it anyhow, since they don't want to start fracturing it, they'd know how to put it together, and all the particulars about that.
One thing I found out this morning that I didn't know is that I've got to go meet again with the state, there's, there's a process for even this, well, it has to pass certain specs because of the width of it and the length of it, and, you know, I'm, I'm, I was just assuming these gentlemen knew exactly what they were doing, and they very well mad, but it still needs to be some kind of certification to state because you are, or we are, as a county, liable...
Correct.
...for that bridge. They didn't know until this last week that there was even a bridge there. So that's been interesting. So that's, that's gonna be a...
We put these in before though, right?
Excuse me?
We put these bridges in before culverts, or no?
Well, it's a wooden structured bridge that was put in...
About 1800s, 1800s, correct?
Those 18 years ago.
No, because Mr. Webber replaced that bridge at some point, but it's been 15, 20 years or something, I don't know. It was a wooden structure, but, and I didn't realize it until this week, there's a law, you cannot replace four-foot culverts. You have to have these open, open box culverts, because it's a law now, because of the, of the fish, and the chronic life and all that, no more replacing four-foot culverts, so.
I didn't know that either.
I didn't know until, I don't know.
I wrote something every day.
So it's kind of interesting, you know, it's like, okay, so they've been biting me down for daily session, to educate me. I didn't know, and maybe I should have put some of the stuff, I had to really go around your agenda, I'm still in on your process, you know, we talked about last week, you know, because we, you was talking about the sand shed. Who's, we talked about power at the sand shed, remember? Whose power is it? Well, at one time, it was the town of Madred's power, but when the town dissolved, it became an open question, so the gentleman that was plowing needed power, so he put it in his name. He shuts it off in the summertime. So then, there's a question raised in my mind, and you guys are the commissioners, you can decide, that's your property, and you, and people are out there, are you responsible to keep that lit, so that, as a safety issue? My suggestion might be that you would put the power in your name, so that you could control a power bill, and anything that the power succeeded because of equipment being plugged in, and then you could bill the contractor for the access power if you so desire.
So who's paying for the power now?
Nobody right now, shut off again.
So why would we want to do that in added goes at that time? Other than liability?
Liability.
Is there another state law that says we have to handle it?
You could ask your insurance company that. If you've got a building that isn't lit, and it's an area in which people are accessing, are you liable?
I think you'd want to have power.
I, I would think for...
The county would want to.
Fifteen, 20 bucks a month, you know, you probably, rather than an insurance claim, it would probably be easier to pay them cheaper for power.
Okay.
That's up to you guys, I didn't, that's your decision.
Good recommendation, this will be mine, Mr. Recommender.
Well, we could, we could actually shut the power, we have a roof, we should win in the summertime, shut the power, have to win up, to shut the switch off, so we wouldn't be using power, nobody would be in there in the winter, summertime, right?
Right, you'd still probably get a basic minimum charge, fifteen, 20 dollars, whatever.
But you have a light there, it's our outside light.
Well, that's what we've been questioning, and we have, we have resolved the issue on the sand. But that's resolved.
So why wasn't it resolved with that?
Well, I gave him the ultimatum, either, either he could see if Mr. Chase was interested in buying it, and he wasn't, then I gave him the same thing that you said, is, you can remove that 300 yads from here, and it's yours, but if you don't remove it in an orderly fashion, it becomes accountless. So it's up to you, they're not gonna give you anything for it, because they paid you, put it out, that's your choice.
Good.
And he decided he would remove it.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah, good deal.
This whole process is becoming interesting to me. You have a lot of, a lot of different issues. You have an issue on Scroos Nubble, it's called the turnaround, for the one of the truck. There is none. So he tries to turn around in an area which isn't big enough to turn around in, and you cannot build a turnaround in front of it because the bank drops off. So last year, backing up, he tore down the telephone pole and the lights, which became an issue with everybody. The homeowner has said in the past they have turned around in his driveway, and they have got stuck in his driveway in his current. But he is willing to sign anything that the county would like for an easement, so that the town, so that the county could turn around there permanently, even if he should decide to sell. His request is that you plow down in there and build a gravel area in which to turn in, so that you're not stuck in the middle of the driveway.
That's the places, two houses in there, one on the right, one on the left.
It's actually, well, there's, there's three houses on that. So, so that's another thing that I wanted to ask you, what would you, what would you like to do? I think they need to, I think they need to get the easement from him, because there's no place, where they try to turn now, they wind all of the snow in the face of his driveway, and it's on a downhill pitch, and he can't get out, and they can't turn around, and it's been, it's been an issue for years, I guess, but nobody has ever decided to resolve it, so.
We talked about that three or four years ago.
Yeah, we did. So if the commissioners like, I will work with Julie and we'll get some kind of an easement drafted, and he would sign it, as long as the commissioners are good with it. Next spring, we would have to, or next summer, we'd have to gravel his driveway...
Gravel, yeah.
...for the term. I, I, it's just a good, it's a resolve to the issue, everybody would be happy.
Yeah, the previous road commissioner mentioned the same thing.
Right. But, you would sign the easement then, right?
Yes. So I'll sign anything you want.
Who is the property owner?
Good, I don't have his name on any of that.
Yeah, I would think that would be a good solution to that.
So we're jumping around, well, let's go back to electricity, we gotta make a decision on that right now, can you just ask our opinion, because we're moving from one to the other without access.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, no, no, I guess not.
That's typical God motion.
I know, so why don't we make, I'll make a motion, and we, we contact Centromane Power and put that in our name, based on the liability, we won't say, I mean, that's why we're doing it, I think, that's why we're gonna do it. So let's, I make that motion, and we contact Centromane Power and put that property which we own on our electric bill, and we'll see whether we shut it off, if we're gonna have a light on there, what happened to the light, that's my first motion, would we, would we contact Centromane Power and we put that into our name, this is our property?
I'll second that. Any discussion on that motion?
You made that motion?
I made it.
Yeah, I second it. Oh, in favor of that motion?
Terry?
Yes.
Yes.
Charlie?
Clyde?
Yes.
Yanis?
Then I would ask one of both of you, what's the status of the light, and put a pole up and put a light there, right, for liability?
We have moved the sand pile...
Yeah.
...from its previous location, so now we want to put the light on the side of the building, shining towards the, the new sand area, and one towards the entrance of the gate coming in, so that you can see getting into the gate, to get unlocked and all that.
Has he stepped his sand and stuff up?
Yeah, it's all up.
It's all up?
Yep.
How many steps, what, a minute, you know?
Well, according to what everybody said, that I recollect, a couple meetings ago, it was $1,000 yads, so...
Yeah.
It's like I said, when you said, "You'd better pull up at least $1,000," but if you pull up more than that, you're not gonna hurt yourself, because you have a five-year contract.
Yeah.
But you have to have enough to go through the doors.
So let's proceed on the light, do you, do you get a bid, or are you hiring somebody? What are you doing on the light?
Well, I thought, I thought that he was gonna put up the pole, the contract. He was, he was gonna put a pole up, because he was gonna leave it in a previous location, we decided to move it, put it over the building, over towards the building, side of the building, so that you could put a light on the building, you think that building will hold it? Hope so. Okay. So Charlie and I, I didn't go out and get that, because I'm trying to figure out, you know, I'm still playing this, figuring out how you guys operate, it's like, all right, are they gonna do power, or is he gonna do power? Who's gonna do the power, and if he, if he's doing the power, does he want the light? And he wants the light, oh my God, it's like...
I think we are...
We're still figuring it out, but I'll, I'll get you your price, I won't do anything until you give me everything we...
Why the power?
We'll take care of the power, because the lights are, it's half-pit.
I would suggest that you just go, try and solicit two or three people, I mean, the thing like the heating business, they're pretty busy right now, we're lucky to get it done this fall, if we don't get going on it. I, I would suggest you don't have to come back, let's just get it done, check around, two or three, let's find somebody who can do it, and just get it done, as long as it's up to the cost.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be more than a few hundred dollars, so.
All right.
Right?
All right.
So I don't know if we need to set it all around, but just go ahead and get it done.
It shouldn't be that much.
Because I, I think we don't have that time at this point, get anybody to do it, and then just liability issue there again, and you want that light on.
Yes.
What I don't know, I was, go back, if, if we want that on in the summertime, there's nobody's there, we can talk about that, you know, whether we make that, shut it off, but that's another issue, so. So let's move along with that, I think.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine.
So you don't have to come back, let's just get it done.
Just get it done.
Is that okay?
Okay.
And if you can get an account number from Semigard.
We need a motion for that, too.
If you ever had that, you'll need that to call.
You want a motion on that?
On a motion on that.
Yeah, why not, sure.
Well, I'd authorize the road commissioner to, to, I vote to, I make a motion, and we authorize the road commissioner to pursue the light at the Madred building, property, and get that restored as soon as possible after review, after receiving several bids.
Second motion. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing that, all in favor?
Terry?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Clyde?
Yes.
Yanis?
All right. What's next, Mike?
You have to vote on that easement, if you guys would vote on allowing us to get an easement, remember, did you vote on that?
Well, I don't think we need a vote, they'll actually approve the actual easement once it's drafted, yeah. But we'll go ahead, and I'll contact one of our attorneys to go ahead and get some...
We talked about four years ago.
Some type of general description of the map, you know, about November, that's what we have.
I'll get some columns, some measuring, that Calvin Gray's on the highway, how big is there?
Yeah, it's an introduction, yeah.
No, we haven't done it.
Lay it out, so we can make that part of the motion.
On the Calvin Road Bridge, Bledgiede's asking if we need a bid process, we're gonna, because I think this is the sole...
If they're, if they're the sole manufacturer of that product, then it's, yeah, you don't have to go through with it, it's my machine.
That's what I want to suggest that we do, go with that contract.
If there's no other competitive in state, then that's fine.
The building's ours. I was asking the second part of this, who's gonna install it? And again, I would think that that same company would be the better people to install.
The ones that made the talk?
The ones that made it.
Yeah. That's what we decided.
Yeah. That's what we did before. Ben?
On that bridge, apparently you need the state approval for it, you have a proposal for cover, who provides that approval, the state?
Maybe a DOT would be the ones to do it.
Peter, Peter Croppen. He's, he's the head of the local roads and...
DOT?
And he does, he works, he works at DOT, but he doesn't work on DOT stuff. He works on municipalities, counties, and stuff like that.
Municipal roads and...
Yes. And I did find out, guys, today, we, I didn't know there was grant money for stuff like that. So there's some other ones that are probably gonna have to be replaced, so we'll try to seek grant money, if it's a matching fund, but at least it's something. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna give you a brief overview of where we've been, where I'm going. You know, we've been working, we've been working on Reed's Mills Road, we got another day that I can put onto that, we've got that patched up pretty good, you know, we've hauled 300-plus yards of material on the side of the road, just to get it so that between the tire and the ditch was ground. We ditched the entire Scroos Nubble Road, we put four cross culverts in, they put the new cement culvert in on the end. And Thursday, we're going to be installing some gravel to finish up that. They're working on Cook Hill right now, they've been up there for, this is their fourth day. Right this morning, they have, from the, they haven't reached the top of the hill yet. From the bottom of the hill to where they are right now, they, they removed 960 yards of material, and they still get the rest of the day, just trying to do ditching.
At least it hasn't been ditched in 20 years.
So, and then from there, we're gonna shoot down and go on to Gilkey Hill. What I, what I'm doing is, just like you said, you, I got a line, and when they reach that, stop, no more, and we gotta go somewhere else. And then we're gonna go over to Wentworth, there's a culvert sticking up out of the ground, it hasn't been ditched for a long time, and then after that, it's, we're gonna go over to Freeman Ridge, if, if it hasn't froze up and snowed.
But is problem with Freeman now, again?
There's no ditch in what?
It's, it's a top there?
It's, it's a, it's, it's gonna be a work in progress, so, I just wanted you to know we're at, what's going on.
Yeah, thank you. Is that it?
That's it for me.
We need to get an action on the grade, on the Calvin Gray Road Bridge construction. We don't need you.
I don't believe so, no.
She says so. Okay? So we need a, how about the loose bridge construction?
That resolved itself, there was a question, concern from DOT, as Mike was alluding to, on they wanted to get it weight loaded, and they needed to see the actual specs of the design of the bridge, and they were having a hard time getting hold of Darego, but my understanding is, is Darego did reach out to DOT just a couple of days ago, so we don't need to be involved in that, so.
Okay. The task is put a log truck over it, load it.
Yeah, and they, and they've informed me that they do reports on all of these bridges, they inspect them every two years, that they know you better...
Right.
...and keep you up to date, and they, they send, the county, it's supposed to be sending the county reports...
We do.
They do, so, you know, we all get it.
We do, yeah.
It's all due to me.
Yeah, we can help.
I'd like to thank the road commissioner for wearing appropriate shoes today.
He won't get any sand in him, will he?
Okay. That's it?
So miscellaneous, I know, as I said earlier, before we started meeting, Kerry Keep from Rangeli Plantation...
Yes.
...is on the line, if you could unmute him, he wanted to address it today regarding an issue.
Kerry, you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey, good name.
Good morning, commissioners.
Is it snowing up there?
Uh, there's no gone yet, but we had enough.
So what's up, what's up this morning?
Well, it, it's been a application for a permit for a marijuana growing facility, here at Rangeli Plantation, nobody wants it, I don't think it's appropriately placed for it. Three reasons, you know, the smell, if you haven't gone by one, and security, it's gonna be 30 by 80, and, you know, we're an hour away from Farmington, you know, if there's a call, who knows what can happen in an hour, a situation like that, and I don't believe the zoning is right, it's zone, it's a commercial zone, but we also have white industrial zone right nearby with a transfer station, I think that'd be more appropriate, that kind of zoning. So I know they notified you guys, and I think they asked you for comments, so I'd like to make comments saying that the location appropriate.
Anything else, anybody else could, have those same comments, or different ones?
Uh, no, there's nobody else here.
I don't remember getting a notification, did you?
Yeah, we did, one came in the mail, yeah, it was up, up on your desk.
Okay.
We get those from time, well, at a previous meeting, it came in a couple, three weeks ago.
Uh, you know, regular towns get a chance to vote on it, but they don't want us to vote on whether we want it, Rangeli voted it out, so now they've moved over here, because they can get away with it with the land use planning commission, and I'm afraid if they put that one in, it's just gonna be a big complex over there.
I'm not sure how to handle it. Any ideas?
It's up to you, do you want to submit a comment? I mean, did they mean that, what it boils down to, does the county commissioners want to take and make an opinion on, a public statement on how they feel on marijuana facility? Is that something?
No, I haven't seen anybody in town that want it, there's, everybody doesn't want it, and I got a phone number here, you can just call them down, say that we don't want it, you guys don't want it, and put it somewhere else.
So will the decision be made by the...
Pardon me?
It's LUPC controls there.
So the decision, final approval of this will be, won't be done by us, will be done by LURC, or LUPC, or...
Right, I think they've just asked you guys for a comment, so if you could just comment with the citizens up here, that you guys represent, I'd be happy with that.
Is this gonna create jobs, Kerry?
Uh, there might be a couple people in there, but we don't need them kind of jobs. Guys know what you had down Farmington, they have the problems, though.
Well, we've got enough.
The security is, you know, very well, it could be more than an hour away, so...
I don't think security's an issue, that I don't, other than people trying to steal with their, the product.
Well, I'm getting that, if they got a million dollars' worth of pot in there, it's, the location is, don't be around there, it's a residential house right behind it, because they don't want the smell either, but...
Well, I would think the builder would know that, that in a remote area like that, there's a high chance, there's a high risk, that's their decision. I'm not gonna make a comment, because I don't know enough about it, so. John, you want?
I don't hear you.
I guess we're not gonna make a comment on it, Kerry, we're not up to date on what's happening. We'd have to check into this a little.
That's pretty important to us.
So you have, you have signatures?
Once it's in, we gotta live with it.
Yeah, I, I understand that. Do you have signatures of the residents stating that they don't want this?
Uh, they've been calling in, they, they won't, I wanted to have a letter passed around on the election day, and they wouldn't give me that in a longer time. and they wouldn't give me that in a longer time.
When's the decision, Carrie, gonna be made by LURC or LURC already called us now?
I don't know, but they wouldn't give, maybe if you could just make the comment to give us some time until after, you know, mid-November, to get signatures, that would be great.
That wouldn't hurt us to make that comment, would it? To be neutral still, to give them time to.
Then you guys could look at the signatures after you get them, maybe you want to make a comment.
Is anybody else there, Jim?
No.
Thank you. Does anybody want to make a comment about this in your area, Brian?
I don't know enough, I think I have ten more.
Yes, make sure. That's not like you.
I mean, it is a public process, you can, they've asked you to comment, you could comment. But I mean, historically, the county commissioners usually have not taken positions on any of those projects that we see from time to time.
But he's asking for us to do a little moratorium on it for a month or two, so we can get signatures? Is that what you're after, Carrie?
Yeah, if you can't do anything else, that'd be better than nothing for us.
Yeah, give him time to get some signatures, but.
I don't think it should be a fresh draw. And I think that, suppose by getting some kind of legislation through, so we'll be able to vote on it at some point. But once it's in, you can't take it out.
This is Clyde, you, you want me to come up and go over the area with you or something? Would it help?
It's gonna have, yeah, well, it's, like I say, I gotta have probably comments this week. So I'd be happy to show you. If we just get that time extended, give us time to get some signatures. They, they didn't, they, they only notified the, the boroughs, they didn't notify the whole town. So people just getting to know about it, it's been, it's only been thirty days.
So Carrie, it's Charlie Rutter, I was just thinking that, and trying, none of us seem to know much about this. It's my first I've heard of it, but, uh, I would be willing to write a letter to LURC and ask them to hold a public hearing up there so you folks would have some input into it. That would make the most.
That would be great.
I don't know if they'll do it, but rather have you, all the people in town have a drive to Augusta or whether they have any hearings, we could request that they have a hearing up there.
I love that.
I don't, that's supposed to be the only thing I think we could do. I mean, I don't know what the end result would be, but we would ask that LURC would, I, I just want to sign a letter asking them to hold a public hearing in the, in that region, so the people in the area could, could learn more about the project and, and offer their input.
That'd be great.
But other than that, I don't know what we can do. And I don't even know if they'd listen to us, but I would be willing to, if you guys like that, I agree.
Uh, you don't have the power to win, just keep commenting, that's all.
So that's the only thing, only little guy I can tell.
Yeah, well, we're supposed to be speaking to these people, so we're doing our job, that's all. I'm, I'm for that, so.
You okay, you fine?
Yeah.
So I would move that we write, we ask staff to write a letter to LURC and ask.
I got a number here, you guys can call, talk to the girl in that LURC named Splattery. You want the number? I got a cell phone.
I think, sure, what's your number? Give me a number.
Five five seven, two oh, two three.
Okay, I would move that we, um.
Just go on.
Reach out to them and ask them, well, either read a column or write a letter, whatever you want to do, guys.
We're gonna fire that number off again, Carrie?
Five five seven, two oh, two three.
Thank you.
Last name's Splattery, I'm not sure her first name, but the cell phones, you're not gonna get anybody else.
Instead of sending a letter, do you want me to just reach out and call and say today, you took action? And she wants me to put it in writing?
Yeah, we'd like to have the, the, at least somebody to go up and have a public hearing up there, so people.
It's part of the process.
A public hearing, they're gonna have, have that in writing, I know that.
They have, they have to have their request in writing?
Yeah, a public hearing. Probably could email, I'm on it, but.
Well, we'll, we'll have, uh, the clerk.
I'll, I'll reach out.
Reach out to them by phone and if they need, if they need a letter, we all approve it.
Yep. Let me call and just see what the process is for us here.
You make that motion, Charlie.
Do I need to make a motion?
Sure.
Okay. So I move that we initially have the clerk, Julie, reach out to this, these folks about, uh, about our desire to have a public hearing in Sandy River?
The Rangely Plantation.
Rangely Plantation, to allow the public to have input on this proposal.
I second that motion. Need further discussion? All in favor of that motion?
Carrie?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Clyde?
Here. Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it very much. Thank all the help.
All right.
We'll see you later.
Yeah, good to hear it from you.
Uh, Ms. Lance, somebody else?
Yeah, Nick, do you want to explain the filter request that we had from the state of Maine?
State, you're shell fans, as we're all aware, we did the air handlers in the courtroom. Um, our filters are MIR eight, which now the CDC is recommending a MIR fourteen filter. What it is, is basically the number eight don't, even the number thirteen don't filter small particulates of such virus or anything of that. They would like to attempt to go with a fourteen here. Um, question at hand is, is regular filters are twenty-eight bucks a piece that we assume responsibility for maintaining? By going to a MIR fourteen, one, it's gonna work a little harder. Um, and two, the filters are not twenty-six, twenty-eight bucks, they're a hundred and six, hundred and eight bucks a piece, which that would entail that we do. This is a trial they would like to do, I'm presenting it to you. If we would like to try this, um, but it's left in you guys' hands because it's a maintenance issue upon that. Being a finer filter, it's going to get clogged sooner, as we all know. Um, so I don't think we'll get a year for a filter, I don't think too. So that's a big cost change for us, as far as maintaining the air.
But the letter states that they're gonna purchase the filters to try it?
Yes, first round.
Yeah, so when do they recommend we change the filters?
Basically, I'll have to keep an eye on them. I mean, like right, right now, I'm due for a filter change, so it's good that they would like to do this.
Yeah.
Um, but as far as longevity of it, we all, none of us know how long this is pandemic is gonna be. Um, so it could be a continuance, or it could be next round we go back for a regular filter.
So if we tried the filters, then they lasted six months. Then we'd have an idea of if it's gonna cost us a huge amount of money.
Right.
So why don't we just try them?
And that's what they're asking is for a, for a trial run, to be able to try this, to see if there's any, any differences in the systems and, and air who rotation is what they would like.
Sounds good to me. It isn't gonna cost us any money.
Not first round, but after that.
Yeah, we can make that decision then.
Oh, okay.
I'd, I'd like to suggest that you keep a real close watch on it, as I'm opposed to it, but in my business, we found people buy these fancy filters and the furnace would lapse through the filter, the, uh, the furnace, heating system would actually, our function burn out. Probably not the same case, I don't know how heat comes through, but you're asking the fan to go through a much thicker area, much more back pressure, much more resistance. We've tried for six months, we are trying to take, to take what happens.
And I did reach out to the installer, because the big vents are where it takes the return air. There are dampers in there. If we don't have them in there, we can get a whistle. Sometimes we still do, but we had to put the dampers in. We may have to adjust them due to being more of a grow.
You'll be able to tell how it's functioning.
Yes.
And it's a good time to get doing, because it went down, so we have a sense that it's working.
Yes.
And it states here that they're oversized anyhow, in the letter.
Yeah, so.
In, in our filter system here, we have a five inch called Big Air. It's one of the, I mean, we went big out of the hole for longevity. So going with the other filter, yes, it's gonna be a finer, but we may hopefully get more than the six months, but we have to give it a trial to be able to see how it will operate.
You know how it works, because you've been trying it, so.
Right.
Yes. So why not do it?
Yeah. You need a motion for that, Julie?
Uh, yes, wait on me, just with the record.
Okay.
So I move that we accept their offer and, go ahead, you know.
I made, I made the motion, we accept their offer. Bill Ryanville, for the filters, for the courtroom, yes. I'll second that. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of the motion?
Carrie?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Clyde?
Yes.
You need anything?
Thank you. Thank you, Nick. More miscellaneous, I know Charlie must have one.
Yeah, I just want to say Mr. Huffnagle's here, he called me and dealt with you and dealt with, with the mic, like. Do you want to say something, Mr. Huffnagle?
Sure.
He used to be on the budget committee.
Good morning.
Yeah. How you doing?
Good. Um, John, I've got a land listing up in Mather, off the end of the Beech Hill Road, off of Reed's Mills Road. So Beech Hill Road is a county road that extends beyond the bridge, that was just recently repurposed. Got a buyer that is in the process of buying one hundred and forty-two acres off of the Beech Hill. Currently, there is a summer maintenance schedule and a winter maintenance schedule on the Beech Hill. Because there's no homes on the other side of the bridge, the plow, the byway's been going right to the bridge turn around and heading back. This residence and this driveway, I believe, will be two hundred yards up the county road to where there is a four corner and a turnaround. And, and in essence, that's the end of the summer maintenance where the county is responsible for, right there. The buyers are requesting to have the current winter maintenance schedule changed, not to turn around and block off, in essence, their right of way to the land, to have them plow across the bridge, turn around, and there's a larger turnaround to do so for plodding, and then head back out. So I'm here representing the buyers and I'm representing the sellers too, because sellers have a vested interest in this. They had the opportunity to talk with road commissioner Mike Pond about, um, the current bid, that was, I guess, just a word, it's private bid for the plowing. And I guess that's based on a per mile, that's how the number came out. This comes out to, in essence, a quarter mile, two hundred yards out, two hundred yards back additional. I don't know what the, the additional cost would be to the county for a quarter mile, but my buyers are asking for you to look into, if they do purchase this, which according would be in December, to extend it and have just have the plow go across the bridge, turn around and go back.
You want that this season or next year?
It'll be quite a process, you'd have to do, adhere and process.
I, I think it would be, next year would be fine, because I've had the, I have L U P C going out there meeting me soon. I've got a soil test going out now before snow flies. There're not, nothing is gonna be done this year for breaking ground. We're having power brought up the Beech Hill Road and up the hill. That's all gonna be done in the spring. So I think, um, for next winter is the primary concern.
I mean, the appropriate way would be to the, once they become the property owners, to formally reach out to the commissioners.
Correct.
And put the.
Correct.
And then we could look, make the decision if that's something you'd want to proceed with, adding on that addition.
I think the reason that commissioners had a winter, the winter maintenance versus summer maintenance is to save money for the county. So now this is gonna cost more money and gonna set a precedence for the future. I'm implying not to do it.
So, uh, in case that got brought up, my buyers have a question for that rebuttal. Uh, so it's a county road, the county owns it, the county maintains it, the bridge was just rebuilt. And, and the summer maintenance does extend to where we're telling, we're asking for the, the plowing to continue. So why would the county spend the money to rebuild a bridge that needs a road to nowhere? Where now you're gonna have a five hundred thousand dollar or more plus home being built on that property, which is, would be additional revenue for the county.
Good question.
And I would like to know the cost. I, I, it seems to me that if they had a house there a year ago, we wouldn't have discontinued. We would have had to do it, just like we do all the other houses. I'd like to know what costs. I mean, I can't imagine it would be that much for a quarter mile.
But that's the reason that we went to the winter maintenance on these roads and other people.
We did a lot of.
Is to, is, because we didn't want to go through closing the roads, because that's too difficult to do.
Now, I think being physically responsible in closing down roads, where there aren't any homes, but I think it, it just makes sense to readdress these new homes, because there's gonna be a lot more coming. I'm in New York State now, and a lot of people are buying our properties up here and building. And with this broadband initiative, where it's allowing people to work remotely, I think you're going to see some of these roads that maybe aren't anything to winter, that may have to be revisited in the, in the near future, because homes are being built.
Do you say it was a half mile or a quarter mile?
It's a quarter mile, two hundred and ten meters out, two hundred and ten meters back.
So since we know we pay by the mile, we can figure out.
We should be able to figure out, I had an opportunity to speak with Mike.
You know, like this, Mike?
Quarter mile.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know if this bid was on that, but I'll, I'll say this. There's a difference between summer roads and winter roads. And I grew up here and now it's a summer road, and it's a summer road because of the condition it is, can't either. I don't like the bridges there. I think there's some issues that we gotta address there, sooner than later.
What, what do you mean by that?
There's no guardrails, there's nothing, man, there's no, there's nothing to keep somebody from driving right off the side of the bridge.
Well, there are guardrails. There are guardrails on the side of the bridge.
Not going across the bridge?
Yeah. Yeah, just not, because you said that, you know, they have issues to fight. So they, they did put guardrails on, on.
Okay, then they just.
Yeah, they are.
But there is, the road needs to be some rehab done to it. There's gonna be a cross of that to bring it to a one-sam. It just is, it's.
Since, that's sort of.
This is the reason it is a summer. You know, the summer roads all over the place, if you can pass them, they're finding themselves. But the dead of the winter, the dead of spring, you don't pass them. They don't, they don't plow it all, they do it in the spring, it's a warm up. So I think you're gonna have to look at that issue, you know, how do I bring it to standing? So that it's, it's fit for, for a year long road.
Yeah, okay. So we need you to do that? Close call. One more job?
And that's why I wanted to, because we, in essence, have a year to take a look at the body.
Yeah. We can take it on that, for sure. All right? Any questions, Tom?
I would ask Julie a question, Julie, if we did nothing and they own, we own the road, do we have a liability if they plow themselves? We do, right?
Not supposed to.
Not supposed to do that. And our lawyers told us not to give permission to people plow the roads.
So by deed, though, they have a right of way to maintain and use it. It's, the county road is the right of way to the property, per deed. So that's where the issue comes in, right? Just, just giving you the facts.
Okay. But our lawyer sees it differently, I guess.
Well, it's good in case we.
Yeah, well, and, yeah, and I'll, I'll bring this, this conversation to the buyers. If they, if they do close, I'll have them, they're gonna come up and come to me to discuss it.
There you go.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, any other miscellaneous?
Ben? I'm just curious, is, is there a law involved there where a developer wants to develop a piece of property, it's in their best advantage to do it, it's in their long-term advantage to do it? But can the developer be asked to improve the road? And you then taking the responsibility for naming it after this, is that, is that possible? Is that legal? Is that done?
Yes, that's quite often.
Yeah.
Especially in larger developments.
That's what town, you could bring one to specs and then you take a.
And then they take over.
Yeah.
How long, how long road is that from, we?
Some of the meetings, how does it all, I mean, you're saying these lots will improve it? Do they not benefit?
My biggest concern, Charlie, is the bridge and the approach to the bridge.
Yeah.
It's not good.
What's the road name again?
Bridge? Beech Hill Road?
Beech Hill.
It's, it's just not, it's not good.
No other houses can have road. You know, we did a lot of, you did?
Standway back there, I can't. Where's it, where's it located? Red, Red, you guys, you've got a public turnaround, and what he was saying was, they think you blocked their road by the, when you turn into the turnaround, when you take the snow and push it into the turnaround, they're thinking you're blocking your access to their driveway, but you're not. It's, it's, snow falls off from the plow, I don't care who you are. You know, it falls off the plow. He isn't plowing snow up to it and leaving it, he's turning in a turnaround. But my thing is, is the approach to the bridge. You come onto that and you go down and it's, it's, then you turn and it's like, what is this?
That's the one without.
It's another one of those things that you have in the county that's never been addressed. It's been, that's all, that's okay, because we've got to cross it with the hoss. That's a good call. That road just, if you go up in the magic, if you go up, it's on the left, and it's on the end of the road where you're gonna.
Isn't that road just, as you go up in the magic, as you go up, it's on the left, and it's on the end of the road where you go down like that?
Yeah, and there's a house up there. And then, and then there's, there's a four-way intersection out there.
Right.
Which is where the county road stops, and I do believe there's a house, a camp up further.
There is.
That's why, that's why you kept the summer entrance.
Is that the one?
But it hasn't been, it hasn't been worked on in.
Because that bridge, you haven't driven it over to the state?
Yes, yes.
But someone with the values, mine went into the.
But we didn't.
Right.
Coming down off the hill.
Do we?
Plow pushes.
Right, and then that guy who plowed it ended up.
So I just asked him if there are any other houses before the bridge.
Yes.
In the ride, but we don't do that and wanna keep them?
No, you plow up to them, but you turn around, the turnaround, before the bridge, that's where it stops.
We don't go to the bridge, like you turn, turn, remember the guy that was plowing out of the door yet into a.
Oh, that's where, okay.
Remember?
I have to, I don't keep these in, okay.
Okay. Yeah.
But I say the issue is, Clyde, is when you go down around that corner to approach the bridge, it's.
Over approach. I, I'd hate to take my truck, if I had a pickup truck, I'd hate to go across that bridge. The way, way it is, the way you approach it, you take a big truck down and then plow the snow, I, I don't, but, you couldn't do it. You'd have to do it with a pickup truck.
I know when we went down and inspected it a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Jerry Hens was afraid to get down because we didn't think we'd get back out, because it's real steep and. I remember that place. Thank you.
Okay, well.
Here's another one.
That's, that's, that's an unorganized territory.
Yeah.
And the state gets taxes on the property, county doesn't get the taxes on that. Is that right?
Indirectly, we get money.
We get money.
Indirectly, but.
They collect the taxes.
We don't, it's not like town. Okay, any other miscellaneous? You think of anything else, Mike?
I don't know.
You did a good job, just keep it up.
So we have the, we, we need to go into executive session on, uh.
We need, before we do that, we need to discuss when we're gonna have our next meeting because it's on voting day.
We always have it.
So we're gonna continue to do so.
We've always had our election day.
Unless you wanna change it.
No, I didn't, no, no, I'm not even changing it, I'm just asking.
No, we, I remember every time we have a voting day, we're having a meeting, a major meeting, so it's a, I, I don't care either way, it's up to you two if you wanna change it, if the challenge is.
No.
Yes, okay, put them in.
We don't usually last that long, we don't usually last that long in a way, so.
Yeah, okay. No, no, Clyde doesn't want it down at nine.
I, I'll come, I'll condone it, Mike, if you want me to.
Okay, so move the meeting to nine o'clock next time?
But that's up to Julie because.
I think Julie likes it better this way because they get.
Right, they have a chance to get their paperwork.
It is, it is nice.
So we'll sleep a bit.
It gives us a chance to get in, get organized, especially when we have to come upstairs, it's.
No, that's, that's fine.
It's awesome, keep it tight.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not up to Clyde to that. If you'd like to have it changed, I refer it to the office help, have them move the books and everything. Okay?
All right. That's a new angle.
No, I just.
I think we are.
Because I get blamed for it every time that we change the date, and I know where it's coming from.
I don't know, we ought to bring something of our own so we can make coffee.
All right, Charlie, you had a question.
I need to make the word.
Let me sit down.
Oh.
You want the word?
No, let me sit down, you wanna talk about.
I'll talk to him. Someone will be, the guy's.
Oh.
Oh.
Are they all signed, Clyde?
No, that one's not signed.
I'm signing on the cup.
That one's not signed.
He's rushing me.
Boy, you've got a lot of signing to do here.
Do we need to be in executive session? Because it's in the, on the, on the.
Handman's sign.
The one thing I want, I want.
Give me the empty box and I'll go around the other.
I, I don't think there, the only outstanding issue, and I want to make sure that I am understanding this in regard to the FOP, and I don't think we need to go into an executive session, is I want to clarify that we had talked about paying a percentage of the family plan.
25.
Correct, but that, you wanted that capped at the current cost, correct?
Correct.
So 348, and it was gonna be capped at the 348 for the two-year period, that was my, my understanding of what you asked county.
There, you don't need to move the caps.
Correct, so the number, we're not saying it's gonna be 25% of what it is this year and the 25% next year, it's gonna be 348 capped for a two-year period.
We're not gonna make tax payers who.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that I understood you right because I was getting, the other side was saying it should have been 25%, and I said, no, I was very clear, it was a cap of 348 for the two-year period.
Capped.
Which, which is 25%.
It is of the current, but it's not gonna be 25% of any increases, it's gonna be capped at the 348.
The idea is we're not gonna commit, we're not gonna, insurance costs go out, we're not paying.
That is correct, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We don't need to have an executive session, I anticipate they will be voting on that contract very shortly.
We better warn and say it.
Another one, huh?
Well, I have two of them. Catch more of them.
Okay, thank you, Clyde. What's the high peaks on the $3,500 for filming? It was in that one.
Tiff.
Is that what it is?
Yes, tiff.
Tiff, so do we approve that annually or is that?
It was one of the projects that you approved.
Okay, thank you. Is that it?
One more, Charlie?
Yeah, I just wanted you to look at it. Have you signed things with that?
No.
Well, here you go.
No, I look to them, no, I look to them.
So we decide that we're gonna leave at 10 o'clock on.
Yes.
Election day.
Yes.
So a motion for, to adjourn?
And make a motion for adjourn?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor of that motion?
Terry?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Clyde?
Yes.
We are adjourned.